September tenth, twenty twenty. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September tenth, twenty twenty four special meeting of the North Bend City Council to order. Can the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Alan Gottho.
Present.
Councilmember Brendan Elwood.
Present.
Councilmember Mark Jocelyn.
Present.
Councilmember Heather Collin.
Here.
Councilmember Christina Rustic.
Present.
Councilmember Susan Turgason.
Here.
Councilmember Errol Tremolata.
Here.
All are present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to our agenda items tonight, I would like to inform the public that we will take public comment after both presentations have been completed. Item number two on our agenda tonight is a presentation on the Middle Fork Property Development Agreement. Mr. Miller, will you take it away? You have the floor. For this presentation.
Yes, Mayor and Council.
Bet.
You had asked at your last council meeting when this item came up, would we schedule a work study or present a working session where we would give you some background as to how we got here and what decisions you've done in the past to lead us up to this? We also heard you loud and clear about your curiosity about what what is this master plan going to look like? And what kinds of controls do we have through our zoning and our current codes to ensure that we get quality development? And what we're here to do this evening is James Anderson is here to present the background and the series of decisions that you've made over the course of the past two years that led us to this particular property being identified as a priority for economic development? And after that was identified, we went to work and working with the property owners. And James has talked with many, many potential tenants, and he's going to talk about some of those potentials this evening. And we're going to give you an explanation of how you got here and also what is this plan going to look like? How do we control it? How do we ensure quality? What kind of uses are going to occur? What kind of uses geographically are going to occur in what locations? So that you get a much better understanding about how the DA and master plan process works. You did approve the master plan process for several parcels and over the course of this last year as a zoning tool to allow us to master plan areas for circulation for land use compatibility and for a number of other things, your infrastructure coordination, all of those things, traffic, et cetera, that if they're master planned and well done together, you end up with a more quality development. And so the standards that rule how we do that are going to be explained to you this evening as we go through the process. Once James has finished his presentation, the developer is here as the potential purchaser of the property to give you some of their thoughts about where this is going to go and what some of the realities are that they're dealing with. And to really answer your questions and staff is here to do the same, to have a good, healthy dialogue and increase your understanding. So that as you move forward, you're comfortable with any decision you might make. And that will constitute really the first half of the presentations and later that will be followed by a presentation from Ben Lane, Fire Chief, on the East Side Fire and Rescue Budget, which is the subject of your budget determinations as well. And with no further introduction, I'll have James take it away.
Great. Thank you, David, and good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you most for being here today. And Phil is pulling up the presentation. All right, next slide, please, Aaron. Great, thank you. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide counsel with an overview of the council approved priorities to support fiscal sustainability, how the master plan process encourages good development, the role of economic development plays to support a successful development, and finally, how development agreement with Middle Fork Property Development supports council goals of fiscal sustainability and economic development. Great. So there have been four major studies and plans in the past year that have highlighted the need for commercial development to ensure fiscal sustainability and meet the needs of residents and businesses. A goal of the Economic Development Action Plan, which was approved in twenty twenty three, is to promote fiscal sustainability by capturing a portion of the estimated one point four billion in annual retail sale leakage from North Bend. In addition, the plan also calls for redevelopment of Truck Town area. The twenty twenty three community survey highlighted the importance of economic development to meet the need of local residents and also to bring more customers to local merchants. The survey also highlighted the community's interest for commercial growth in East North Bend. The recently concluded fiscal sustainability study demonstrated the importance of development in Western East North Bend for mid and long term fiscal sustainability. And council supported establishment of a tax increment area in West and East North Bend to encourage development to generate additional tax revenue. Finally, the council strategic plan highlighted the need for additional parks, roads, improvements and other amenities to meet the needs of residents in the mid and long term. Next slide. Last week's budget hearing highlighted the need to bring additional revenue to the city to curb a potential reduction in city services. The estimated twenty five million, the estimated deficit of twenty five million over five years highlights the need to bring new development to North Bend and the importance of developing the large commercial sites in both West and East North Bend. Next slide. The property in East and East North Bend and that Millport Development is interested in acquiring requires an approved master plan before development can begin. Master plans are an opportunity to bring the highest and best uses to the property in order to achieve North Bend's goals. And really, the master plan process really is meant to encourage and really kind of foster innovative planning solutions and practices that really bring out the full potential of the property and, of course, promote economic and efficient uses of the land. As part of the master plan process, the city also has code requirements to ensure that the development meets North Bend's goals and objectives. This includes a public meeting to gather input for the plan, a transportation study, analysis of existing infrastructure, and of course, proposed uses at the site. The master plan process also has extensive staff review before it goes to a hearing examiner for a final decision and approval. In addition, part of the process that we would bring forward for this master plan is to brief both Planning Commission and Community Economic Development Council, so they have awareness of what the master plan is being proposed. So the role of economic development is really one that is an important partnership to encourage development and bring good businesses to the site. A common role of economic development is to look for ways to reduce risk and streamline processes to help developers reduce their costs to develop a property and get business open quickly to generate addition, to generate revenue. In addition, economic development also works with developers to recruit businesses that meet the master plan or the zoning requirements at the site. So basically, right now, we're currently working about fifty active projects who are potentially interested in locating or expanding to North Bend. One of the things that makes this site really quite interesting and really attractive to developers and businesses is that it's really a very rare, large, undeveloped site in the Puget Sound region. Having worked at both the regional level and at Snohomish County, a site this size is really extremely rare in the region. And it's really one that's very sought after by not just, like I said, developers or businesses, but also ones that can bring some really high end and high tech manufacturing to a community because of the rare site that's located. So this is a list of some of the projects we are currently working on. Currently, the city does not have sites to meet the space requirements for these companies. Therefore, these projects could definitely benefit from a development of this property by providing the space needed for their operations and bringing quality jobs to local residents as well as tax revenue to the city to fund essential services and new amenities. So as you can see here, this is just sort of a sampling of the fifty projects that we're currently working on. These are the ones that would really best fit the site requirements because they have a mix of both light industry, manufacturing, as well as retail. Obviously, one project, Belay, is a climbing gym and mountain training center. That one's been been working on that one for almost a year now. It's moving pretty quickly in the process. So definitely, there could be land potential that would host this project. In addition, we're also working with International Medical Device Company that's looking to cite their location somewhere along I ninety in the Puget Sound region, as well as a distillery manufacturer, indoor sporting recreation opportunities. And then also potentially an outdoor apparel manufacturer. There's a lot of businesses in the South Seattle area that are being squeezed out because of rising costs, because of redevelopment of land for residential opportunities. And so it'd be great if we could retain those jobs, retain those companies in this region as well, and this site affords that opportunity. And finally, I've had the opportunity to meet with a number of other restaurants, retailers and hoteliers at a recent conference in Las Vegas, ICSC, and talked with them about the potential of North Bend and specifically this potential development opportunity. Next slide. So staff has been working with the developer to provide an initial master plan concept for the site. This includes a buffer zone use at the north end of the property and then retail, commercial along the Frontage Road of four hundred sixty eighth to meet the needs of local residents as well as the traveling public. And then Bob Powers, after the presentation, will provide you more information about this conceptual master plan. The proposed development agreement both lowers the risk for development by reducing impact fees and allowing a choice of water providers. It also encourages development of a site that has been vacant for many years by requiring the submission of a master plan in six months and building permit in two years. The proposed development also meets council goals. It meets the Economic Development Action Plan goals of capturing retail sales and redeveloping Truck Town and supporting the community survey's desire to bring more economic development and commercial uses to East North Bend. Finally, development of this property meets North Bend's fiscal sustainability goals. It would generate an increase in property sales and businesses occupancy tax revenue, provide North Bend with needed revenue to fund essential services, pay for new amenities such as parks and sidewalks, and then also meet North Bend's long term financial obligations. So thank you very much for the opportunity to provide this presentation to you, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Powers.
Thank you, James. Bob Power and I'm not going to spend a whole bunch of time on history, but you've got the sheet I just handed out. I think it's important that everybody understand a little bit of the history on this parcel and the piece that we own. Rob, my partner, has a long term relationship with the Rogers family that goes back, I think, as far as the early two thousands. When we first got involved in that parcel, they're the underlying landowner of the Truck Town site as well. And the reason I think it's important to bring this up is that when we were, we were, when we permitted the Genie project, that was done through King County. And I think there's a little bit of misconception on the concept that this piece has been the long term goal or gateway to the Snoqualmie Valley as a long term North Bend plan. You guys didn't annex the land until two thousand and ten. And when you did it, you did it for the specific arrangement of that property, which was zoned industrial, was to be zoned industrial in North Bend, conditioned upon re-agreeing to the annexation and hooking up to the sanitary sewer system for which on the, this parcel alone, you guys have collected close to a million dollars on sanitary sewer fees. So what I heard in the last council meeting, and I think what what you all need to address, there's two issues. There there's the economic component of what we're discussing with the DA. And there's the other side of this, which is the rezone, which we heard, and or other lower impact uses. I can't speak to what you may want to do as a council regarding a change of use in the property. There is nothing that Rob and I would not consider that is economically viable on this piece of property that is allowable under the current use. And you need to understand on the current use that outdoor sports facilities are not an allowed item under the code. You'd have to rezone the property in order to do that. And the the one thing kind of dawned on me that I didn't realize when we started working on this DA, how much at the end of the day, it aligned our goals because you want tax revenue to support the the operation of the city. We have asked for a economic bright term, the the forestalling of paying some of the mitigation fees that you could collect back through sales tax. Well, without that component, we would not be driven to bringing in uses that generate a lot of sales tax, an industrial user who may or may not have retail sales. Well, with what we're doing, we have been incentivized to bring in exactly the uses you want. People that will pay sales tax because if they don't pay sales tax, we at the developer at the end of the DA have to pay you anyway. So again, if this is about economic benefit, we have, we have a history in North Bend that goes back over thirty years. As I said, we did the ULID that got the sewer and water in where the Safeway is. I think that we have a reputation in the community, both as a contractor and a developer of building quality projects. We keep our projects. We don't sell them. We believe in long term benefit to us, and the way you get that done is building a long term relationship with your tenants in the community, and that's what we do. If if there's other uses out there that that people feel are more appropriate, you know, that are not the what you would expect to see in a redevelopment as this parcel is an industrial, commercial property. I can't speak to that. That's decisions that you all need to make. And I'll be totally candid with you. I wasn't sure what I was going to say on this, but Rob and I are over seventy now. We're a little bit tired of pounding square pegs and round holes. If if you guys really believe that there's a better use for this property, we had this conversation with Puget Western three days ago. If if you want to step into our shoes on the purchase and sale of this property and buy it, we'll turn over our position to you. I'll be real clear. You got to come up with a hundred thousand dollars in two weeks, and you got to come up with eight point five million by November fifteenth. That's the deal. So we're here to add, you know, I'm the bad cop today. Rob's the good cop. So if you want to hear from him about all the wonderful things we can do, he's more than prepared to talk to you about those. I'm here to give you an honest objectivity of where we are as a developer, what we think we can do as a developer, and why we teaming with the city really blends our two interests together in terms of providing uses for the property that are quality and generate revenue for the city. Thank you.
Counsel, would you like to hear from Rob? Rob, would you like to present if you're comfortable with that? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Also, I know that we're excited about the chance to develop this property. As Bob said, I've actually been involved in this since the early nineties on this area out here, working with several families, you know, that grew up here in in North Bend. We have a track record of working with communities and with municipalities successfully with King County, with the city of Seattle. In fact, that was working with both of them at the same time was probably the most challenging thing that I've done in my career. We redeveloped the old Seattle landfill. And but we've, like I said, we've, we're kind of straight shooters. And we want to make sure this is a quality project and meets the needs of the community. Thank you.
Counsel can, let's have some questions and answers, I guess, from our presenters tonight. Yep, yep. We're probably going to have some counsel questions and answers. So if you want to come back, sorry. That's all right. It's fine.
I'll try and defer to Rob.
Gentlemen, for both of you being here. Okay, Bob.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Tremolata.
Appreciate the presentation. I think I might have asked this question to you in our CED committee, but I'll ask it again just for the open. You're clearly comfortable with the DA because you wouldn't go into it if you weren't, but what, where do you stand with, to the extent you're willing to tell us, with your capital stack? Is this a fundraise? Are you prepared to close? Is this, if we agree to this, is this going to close?
It's pure equity. We're not borrowing anything to do it. Our our current funding, current funding committees commitments about seventy five percent of the way there. Rob and I are both significantly personally contributing, so I believe we're on track.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, mine's more for the city. Do we have eight point five million dollars plus a hundred thousand dollars to purchase this property?
The hundred thousand is part of the eight point five.
Just. I meant, did our city, could they possibly potentially ever pay eight point million dollars to purchase this property?
Given our recent budget discussions, I would say that is a very distant, distant hope. And we do not have the funds at this point. And, you know, given the challenges that we face in the next couple of years, and I think you all have had some pretty good budget presentations, we are, we are very heavily committed and to our current expenses, and we are negotiating some very expensive public safety contracts at present. And I think I would rather leave, and I've been in this business before, I would rather leave this to the professionals to to help us achieve our goals of economic development. And I don't believe that we have the funds to buy it, nor do we have the expertise to turn it into a good revenue source for us for the long term. And we hope that we have enhanced your knowledge about economic development through some of the studies that you've participated in and that you understand the development process is indeed a partnership between us and the folks that know how to do it. And if we do it well, we can have projects we're proud of and that are attractive and that continue to allow us to provide a high level of service to the community.
Or anybody else from council? Mr. Elwood?
Thank you, gentlemen. That was a appreciate your candor, your authenticity and your dedication. One of my questions is, what are your criteria? So you go through the master plan. What are your criteria for renting, leasing, or getting new retail stores? And I appreciate your point that, you know, you're incentivized to recruit businesses there that will have to pay a sales tax. But what is your criteria for choosing who occupies the retail spaces?
Can they pay the rent? I mean, that that's a pretty candid answer. For us, we go through the master plan development process with our design professionals, planners, architects. We also would work with James on who the potential users are for the site and our long term strategy on the property. And this is a little bit unusual for us in all candor. Normally, we are a a single user type developer. This is, with the exception of the landfill that Rob went through, this is something that we anticipate will have the potential for buyers as well as users. It will develop pads that if if we've got an owner user who wants to own, will be available. And, you know, at that point, similar to the, where I think the city is, is if it's a compatible use within the zoning and it and it goes through your DRB, I don't really have any other criteria than that. I mean, down to a climbing gym, if the economics work and and they want to go there, I'm I'm not set on factories, you know, and I do have to clear up one misconception, and I said this at the council meeting. We we've had a conversation with a auto dealer. How that turned into an auto mall is completely beyond me.
Well, and that's part of my my questioning is, are you going to build it? They will come. Or are you already in talks with certain customers, renters, if you will, that will help, I guess, shape the master plan designs that you're working on?
Yes, that's that's fair. And I can also tell you, and again, I think this is dangling something out there that I have no guarantee on ability to deliver on. But the importance of our relationship with the Rogers family is they're the underlying landowner on Truck Town. And those leases expire in, I believe, two thousand thirty, is that right? Thirty-two? Which is maybe a long time for me, but some of you people may not be. But you know, is there a master plan that incorporates more than just our parcel? You know, if we are under contract and able to move forward, one of our first stops is to drop back and talk to the surrounding community, property owners, to find out do they want to participate in a larger plan for the area? But I I can't control what they do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go around. We'll take yours after I've cleared the everybody else with any comments. Okay, Mr. Trump.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here and saying this. One of the questions I have, we have two different zonings for this property. Is this property zone EP two or is it zone EP, which zoning is this property?
It is zoned EP two.
It is. Okay, so it would not be an employment park, you know, where you'd have warehouses and stuff like that. Or not?
Big pardon?
Well, this is allowable use for EP two.
Yeah, there are many allowed.
Park. So there is warehouse availability on that piece of.
That that is allowed. You'll notice, though, that I think and and the developer and we have had conversations about the uses that we think are probably supportive of not only tax base, but the face of the project, if you have retail uses along that face, it's going to be a lot more inviting and attractive than if you have industrial uses or warehouses. So we're trying to move the industrial, more of the industrial uses inboard, have a buffer use against the residential that's compatible on the north and along the main thoroughfare, which is where you want retail, because that's where the traffic is, to try to get some really attractive retail uses out there. And we also have been talking about uses that would support activity up the middle fork, like restaurants, coffee shops. There is an interest in a in a climbing outfit for a climbing gym. Again, as Bob says, if they can pay the freight for the property and locate in the project, he's perfectly open to that. And what we're trying to do is to hear what the community says, hear what you want, use the talents of James to try to meld those together with a list of users that looks much better than just a blank master plan. So we're trying to be sensitive to where the uses are located, be sensitive to the economic needs, but also be sensitive to the fact that we've got a major interchange down there that is vastly underutilized. And people are coming through. We probably have more traffic on I ninety than any other freeway in the Northwest. So we're trying to capture that, not only with the middle fork. I mean, if I go hiking and I'm coming out of there, I'm going to sit down for a cup of coffee and rest or maybe have a sandwich. So we'd like to see some of those uses as well. So what we're trying to do is is to look at the industrial nature, but marry it with some of these retail opportunities that are much more attractive and make a much more attractive front door.
And just one fob on that is if the if the area supports retail, retail supports higher rent. I mean, just from a purely economic perspective, our interests are aligned, not only on repaying back the 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 impact fees because of the sales tax that comes in, but just on a fundamental lease basis. But whether or not that area is going to support enough retail, I'll be candid. I don't, I don't have a magic ball for that one. I can't tell you. You know, to go back to your point, Councilman, we can't build it and they will come. We can make it ready for them to come. And we're open to almost anything that would go out there that makes economic sense, that is a quality project that we can retain long term or could sell off pads that was consistent with the view and the development we want to have happen.
So would that be said, you know, that's that's a concern I want to. I want to see the retail, and I know if we take a look at what we're trying to do here, it's kind of, I want to parallel out with big things that have done in the city, which have been successful. One, the outlet mall was a, you know, when it first came in, everybody was against it, didn't want to see it happen. You know, in fact, I think the mayor was a one-term uh mayor because of that. But if you look at the economic and what that done for this community and keeping our costs low from a taxpayer, it's been positive. But in the current environment, we see a lot of open retail throughout the city. The question I have to you is, do you see, are you, you know, seeing any data that says that's going to change? Because a big piece of what you're showing us here is retail, which as I think excites us along. The areas I think we don't won't be excited about is an open warehouse with no, you know, no tax and just a warehouse. I think that would add to the the traffic situation there, because as you've probably seen, since you're part of it, you see what happens during the winter. What are your thoughts about, you know, actually driving those things there? And and do you feel like you have a good comfort feel of being able to achieve it?
I I can't create a change in an economic environment, right? We've been having conversations with not only some of the people James has mentioned, but some some retail people in Issaquah. That are feeling the need to maybe move farther out. My guess is that. Some of the retail pads, if we stay consistent with the concept that was shown for the master plan, that there's going to be a number of those pads. That may take four or five years to to fill out. And I I I can't make them come. All that I can do is provide the flexibility. And the economic incentive for it to make sense.
My last one is actually to the administration, trying to explain, you know, the whole idea here is if we wouldn't be here having this conversation, probably the DA would go through. You know, without much, but with the what the way we're packaging the pricing. Um, how does that work? And how does anybody, because I've had a lot of questions over the last couple, last week, saying, well, how can I entertain this idea of getting a a discount? On that the impact and then pay it back with sales tax? So can you explain how that works in in the city? What's done, how that's not considered a gift of taxpayer dollars, that kind of thing?
Well, you know, you can go anywhere in the United States and go into an economic development department. And as you know, a lot of people aren't as fortunate as we are, because people want to be here. This is a very desirable place. If you go to other cities in this region or other counties, they all have economic development departments. They all use development agreements and they all use incentives. And in fact, the the reason legislature approved of the tax increment model is to be able to capture property tax to reinvest it into redevelopment. And that's what we're looking at and we're showing you how to do that, and that's one of the tools we hope to employ here. Another thing that we hope to employ is there is a potential for using REIT because REIT is real estate property uh tax that we get each month. And it is specifically earmarked for either infrastructure or affordable housing. So if we chose to do a deal that was based on a certain amount of property tax, we could substitute REIT, keep the property tax. Because the REIT is earmarked for certain uses.
I didn't think we were talking property taxes. I thought this was sales tax.
I I I'm talking about incentives for development. I thought your question was.
Well, I'm specifically talking about the sales tax one we're here. I know that there's another one we're looking at where we take the whole area and creates. A a zone which will also increase. That's another piece I think we're talking about putting. I'm specifically talking about, you know, reduction of of sales tax fees for this. Because getting a lot of other people asking about this, how is that, is is, you know, how does that work? And have other cities done this?
City, many, many cities have. Um, I think that probably James could give you specific examples. He's been involved with in the King County area. But for instance, some of the greatest sales tax uses you'll have will be either um large ticket items, anything from boats to. To cars to whatever, because the sales tax is huge. And for cities to uh attract that, they oftentimes will use a sales tax rebate. And what they're trying to do is incentivize, because the development process is so expensive. Incentivize people to locate, because they will have long-term repeated income that results from a one-time incentive. And so I've even had people from, for instance, Bellevue Honda come here, and they wanted to store hundreds of cars here. And I said, great, bring the city manager from Bellevue over and let's do a sales tax deal. Because we're not interested in just storage of cars or things that don't enrich us. So I think the the right way to look at this is it's available to anybody who can bring a project in. And show very positive economic uh return to the city. It behooves us to do use one-time money to get long-term money back. And if we do that, and we're able to provide the funds for you to say yes to people who come to you for parks. And streets being paved and police services. Right now, I think I handed an article out to you over the email today that talks about cities in the United States. That are having tremendous problems paying for services, and they're competing like mad. For these uses that will produce income for the cities. And it's a very common tool to use some degree of sales tax. To the developer to lower the front-end costs, to get the project in the ground. Remember, it's a one-time investment for many, many years of return. And so like you look at any investment yourself, for your family or your business. You want to have a larger return in the future from your investment today. And that's very common in economic development today. And if you say there are other people that are interested, that have large parcels that could really help us, we have the design control. We can, we can implement science standards, landscaping standards, buffers, architectural standards. You yourself have implemented a number of these and controlling building height and bulk. So they can only build on a scale that will accept. So we can control those things. But what we've done is we've become a bedroom community. We've built out residential and the number one thing that the citizens said out of a huge sampling in your citywide survey, which you asked us to do. Their number one priority was economic development. And that means places to work, places to eat, places to buy their kids clothes. Everybody buying those necessities drives out of town. And people want that locally, and that means we capture those sales tax dollars. When we did the Economic Development Action Plan, we did intensive surveying to find out that. Two uh two point one billion dollars a year of expendable income leaves our community. We need to capture some of that. We need to be able to afford things like our police and fire and everything that we want. And I I really do. My primary uh job here is keeping our head above water and providing those opportunities to you. So that when budget time comes around, you have the funds to do what you want to do, but it's very commonly used.
So so can James, can you point to a community that's done that? So we can, I mean, love to talk to other, you know, our, you know, peers to see how this worked. And again, I I'm not sure I got exactly what I was asking for the question. And I did read that article, and the article ultimately talked about uh communities that had a high amount of commercial buildings that were empty. Versus where we're at right now. So it wasn't quite apples to apples.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So there's a really good example, actually in the Arlington Marysville area, just north here in Snohomish County. They have what's called the um, it's called basically the MICK that had the uh manufacturing industrial center up there. One of the things, one of the Gray or Seattle partners we worked on with them basically is to bring high-quality tenants. Because it was a very large tract of undeveloped plan. So one of the things they put in place was both tax increment financing to help with the the ground infrastructure and really. Put in place the infrastructure there to build out the property. They also had uh what's kind of classically known as a tax abatement, basically. So that was based on uh the amount of capital that the company invested into the site as well as job creation. And so as long as they met those targets, they got a reduction in their property tax that generally lasted about ten to twelve years. So that's one example of it. Other examples have been, you know, other communities like Bellevue and others who do development agreements. Basically to get increased height of the developer in exchange for increased density, so it can bring more people to the area. That drives, of course, retail sales and things like that. So there's lots of different ways that this uh development agreement is employed. And it's, you know, to be quite frank, it's very common. Where I was in Texas, we use incentive agreements like all the time. And the best, as Dave said, the best incentive agreement you can have with the company is basically one that invests into the ground. So basically putting in like electricity, plumbing, infrastructure, anything like that. Because then it transfers to the next tenant down the road. So once that tenant is done, it moves moves on. If I can just say one thing really briefly, I think was to Brendan's comment about who, how we can attract the right companies here. I won't go into too much detail, but economic development is really a very, in some ways sophisticated field. You have to do a lot of data, you have to do a lot of research and analysis to understand what kind of tenants. Or what kind of businesses you can attract to your, to your uh, to your town. One of the things when I went to Las Vegas to ICSC, I was very cognizant of me with retailers that would not cannibalize any. Type of sales in the downtown area. That was very important. I know it's very important to you. It was important to me as well, because we want a really. Uh, healthy and thriving downtown area. That said, we can also look at different needs that can really support the traveling public. As well as the needs that are missing within North Bend, and there's quite a lot of needs. I mean, we hear from community surveys, like the recent one uh for the uh potential development of the gas station of what people are looking for. So we can reach out and target those companies. Um, I used to throw the analogy out there that really good economic development is like fly fishing. If you want to catch the right fish, you have to have the right fly. You have to know how to present it. You have to really know how to get it. And that's really kind of a lot of the groundwork that goes into this type of work. Before we even, you know, meet with the business or meet with the company, we have to know what we have that is attractive to them. What they are looking for, and then you begin that discussion to bring that business to your community. So, you know, I fully anticipate we'll work with Bob and Robert to bring those uses here. Again, you know, this property is super rare in the Puget Sound region. And the types of manufacturing that we see in the in the Puget Sound region is very high-end. It's usually employment of seventy-five to one hundred individuals, high uh paying engineering jobs. High-paying manufacturing jobs. They tend to lean toward commercial aerospace, that type of thing, especially with Amazon and others here. Uh, with their commercial, with their commercial space projects as well as Boeing. So I mean, that would probably be the type of businesses we would target for this site, because it's a good match. Especially proximity on Interstate ninety, et cetera. So yeah, I think we can, you know, really bring some good uses to the site.
And if I could follow up with, I get to say the hard things tonight. I maybe didn't get to say in the other meeting. But we asked for two things in the DA, and I think James did a wonderful job in his presentation in identifying. Why? One of them is certainty. From a development perspective. You want to know what the rules are. That's even more important than how much they cost. Because if if we can't get water to the site, then all this becomes meaningless anyway. So then we get to the economics of why we're asking for a deferral on sales tax. Because it's not, it's not a reb, it's not a giveaway, it's just a deferral. You need to know that, you know, my math on a middle-of-the-road estimate on. What we will pay on impact fees right now for industrial use, we'll pay eighty-six percent. Of the purchase price of the property back in mitigation fees. It's over seven million dollars. If we get into retail uses, it's going to exceed a hundred percent of the purchase price of the property. And the good or bad news that you need to know, city, you have the highest transportation impact fees in the state. We we at one point, when we first got involved with uh Puget Western on this parcel. We had a goal of trying to move all of Tarex out of Redmond. They have, that's their R and D center, their their headquarters, their manufacturing. And it was a combination of the two things. It was the economy moving at the same time that when you ran the math with the impact fees. The the cost benefit of the land purchase was offset by the impact fees. So why impact fees? Because we got to make the numbers work.
And I'm not arguing the impact fees. I understand what you're, I I'm just trying to figure, I have, I'm trying to find where we've done it at sales tax, so we don't have an issue. Long term, is this, is this, you know, that type of thing? I'm trying to understand, because it it's kind of a deferral, but at the same time. It's being paid with dollars that would be coming into the org as sales, a sales tax if you were to build it without that. So I understand that. My is trying to truly understand where the sales tax, especially we've talked about other financing increments. Ways of doing it. So that's really what I was trying to get at, and I don't know if I got the answer that there's anybody that's done it with sales tax. I've heard property taxes, I've heard other things. And so is this some, the bottom line is the next step would be the attorney, and I'm assuming they looked at, this is defensible as, you know, we can do it.
I did, the state does it all the time.
Hey, Kendra, can you speak to that? Because it's it's kind of a unique, and I'm I'm trying to figure out. Looked around to see if there's other cities that have done it and and trying to understand if that's all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, I can speak to it. So the legal authority lives in RCW eighty-two oh two oh six oh subsection two. And the law allows for reductions or waivers in impact fees for certain purposes that have a broad public purpose. And um because the waiver of the impact fees will be replaced through those sales tax funds. It is permissible under the statutory scheme. I can't speak to other cities who have done it this way, only because. Every DA is unique. That's sort of the purpose of a DA, so I would rely on James and Dave for that. But the statute does allow development activities with a broad public purpose to have a reduction or waiver in impact fees.
And and one thing I forgot to mention, because we work with a lot of industrial users. The state does exactly what you're asking about all the time. That you get a manufacturer's exemption from paying sales tax on building projects for that portion of the project. That is directly related to manufacturing. So the state does it throughout the state.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, we're gonna, okay, we have somewhere. Let's let's start with you, because you're.
Oh, I thought you.
Yeah. Yeah, because. Yeah, we're going to go another round loop, so I'm making sure everybody has spoken the first time.
That's, that's, okay, here we go. Okay, um, so so kind of two questions that are tied, I think they're for James, actually. But um, the list of active projects, if if this property weren't in existence hypothetically. These projects would still be in work. Is that true? On page eight of your presentation?
Yeah, some, I mean, some of the projects could be in play, uh, but if this site doesn't get developed, same with the west side, it doesn't get developed. For industrial uses, then most of these projects would be, would go somewhere else, either within the region or potentially out of state.
Okay, and kind of a follow-up. I don't think um. That you explained the master plan that is due within six months. If the council doesn't agree with what is shown in the master plan, can you talk about what? Options, if any, uh, we would have to to push back on that?
Yeah, I'm going to hand it over to Jamie here. She has more expertise on this subject than I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think that what we did when we put the overlay on the property, the underlying uses are permitted. We didn't change that. So if people bring in allowable uses according to the zoning. They have the right to develop them on the property, because we've designated what we will allow in EP two. So it isn't, this isn't a situation where you take all of the uses that are allowed in EP two. And you say you can't do these five, but you can do these five. The way that we deal with that issue is we hold the design standard. Up to every project. And there are some uses that will not design to the level that we want them to. They can't do it, they can't afford to do it, or they're not willing to do it. And those are generally the uses that you find objectionable. So we try to use design standards to make an attractive project that has nice frontage. Nice places for people to gather, um, that is attractive in terms of its signage and its architecture and its landscaping. And really presents a a good design package to the city. And we find that most of those uses that people find objectionable are not attractive. And if we put the design standards to them and say you have to do this, we find people walking away because they're not willing to do it. So you generally find that those uses that you would like. Are willing to do that, because it's part of their corporate philosophy, and it's part of the design standard that those kinds of uses are used to running into. So that's kind of how you do it. Now, another thing that you need to be aware of is this master plan. master plan is like other zoning that requires that they go to a hearing examiner for the final approval. So the hearing examiner is like a zoning officer. And we use that for our large subdivisions. We use that for a lot of approvals. And it takes the politics out of the approval, but it makes the standards much more valuable. Because when the hearing officer comes in, he takes a checklist out of our standards and goes through every one of them and takes testimony from the public. And that all influences that person's decision. So it isn't just any use you want goes there. There's quite a process they go through. So it isn't, it isn't the council's prerogative to say these uses in EP two are okay, but these are not. But you have adopted, you, the council in past years have adopted some pretty stringent design standards. So if people want to build here, they just have to build to them. And that includes buffers. It includes the way you do your transportation. You'll note that in this plan, we have another roundabout that is at the point where the middle fork takes off and it allows you uh, smooth access in and out of this project. We've also required roads that come out at several locations for both easy access, keeping traffic away from the residential areas and for emergency services. So there are a whole lot of design criteria that this developer is going to have to deal with. And generally that filters out some of the more objectionable uses.
Jesus, you're scaring us away.
He knows it's coming.
Jamie, did you have anything to add?
Um, I would just say that, um, like Dave, like Dave was talking about, the the process is very rigorous. There's a lot of information that they have to submit um, right out of the get-go. And if there's any deviations in uh, uses, they have to demonstrate why that would be a benefit to the city, um, why we should consider it. If there's a change in zoning or a change in the land use designation, it could require a comp plan amendment or a zoning change that would come to you guys. And then once it is approved by the hearing examiner, if there's changes they want to make beyond that approval, again, it's considered a code amendment and it would go through a planning commission, um, recommendation and then council approval. Um, so there's a, a lot of criteria, a lot of um, work that goes into putting together the package. And that's why we just already just briefly in a week have kind of carved out, you know, this is what we would want to see. So if it comes in and it's not even close to that, we're going to say, well, that's not really what we had envisioned. And staff has a lot of um, ability to have conditions that then go to the hearing examiner. So it, it, it goes down to the detail of you need to show where the buildings are going to be, what their sizes are and what their uses are. So it can, it might say retail. Um, by the way, retail is not outright allowed in EP two, but I think you can show the benefit and the reasons why you would want to include that in your master plan. And then you just go from there.
Okay, we can go around, uh.
My question isn't about the DA or the property because nobody lives closer to this area than myself and maybe two people in the audience. But my question is, there is a new building across from Dahlgren Park. It's a building and it's sitting there empty. And that's concerning that it's not getting used to bring in tax revenue. And is that something could potentially happen on this property that I live across the street from?
I do know that the same developer has another property he's interested in over um, by Nintendo and didn't, doesn't seem to slow him down that it's taking a little bit of time. Um, maybe you guys want to speak to it too?
Well, it, it is as though it's not producing anything. You've got property tax they have to pay and all of the improvement on that is valued fairly high. And they have to pay property taxes on it. And i- if they're a decent business, they're motivated to fill it. They just haven't found the right user. Not many people will build speculatively today. And if they do, they're still paying you property tax. They still have a square foot tax to pay for the warehouse because you have that in effect. So those revenues still have to come in and they're still paying. Even though nobody has been building.
Brendan.
Thank you. And to clarify my question a minute ago, I thought we were doing around the developers first and then staff. I just want to be clear. I wasn't trying to cut my, my colleague off. I was just, I follow process as best I can. Um, so I have a couple of questions and thank you. And, and, and these will be mostly directed at staff, but feel free to chime in. I, I appreciate your context. When we're talking about the master plan experience, will you please talk us through the journey of that? And, and I know we referenced it on slide five, but what does that journey look like?
I think it, as indicated earlier, it's very much a partnership. What we're doing is we're bringing uses to the developer. The developers bringing uses to us. The developer, as they go through developing the master plan, they're going to go down this checklist of requirements. And we're going to make sure they meet them. They'll probably do several iterations. And they will probably over time try to tie down as many of these sites as they can. Obviously you're not going to put, you know, eight million bucks out there and not get any return on it. So it, it also involves the traffic study. It involves all of the traffic circulation. We do have a plan for how we would like uh, the frontage to look that we ran through the process earlier. So there are some tree preservation things and, and, and the roundabout is, is predetermined. So there's design of that. There is, there are buffer areas and uses that need to be buffered that are adjacent, that cannot have uses that are offensive to the residential area. So they'll have to design those and show how they're mitigating it. So all of their infrastructure internally, their water, their sewer, their storm drainage has to be designed. All of their landscaping has to be designed, in particular, the buffer areas that buffer it from other uses. So there is a large design process they go through that involves engineering and architecture. And it really, um, it really is intensive.
And about how long of a time do you think this journey is?
Well, I think in order to get to the point where they have a master plan, we're putting, what, six months in this before they bring the master plan in. It may take a little longer than that to process components of it. For instance, storm drainage is a real challenge around here. So they're going to have to have areas where they either store it underground or it becomes part of rain gardens or other design features. Um, obviously they're going to have to uh, design the right of way and coordinate with other people that need access around them. So it's got to work for everybody. So they'll come in with a master plan and we'll know in general what those uses will be and how they're going to serve it, where the roads are going to be, some of the really obvious things. But to, to vet those all the way through to construction documents is probably going to take them the better part of two years.
And then how many milestones or checkpoints along the way is council brought in for either update or decision-making that we may have to do?
You know, in terms of the actual entitlement process, that is, uh, you know, they go through a hearing officer and, and that really gets their, their plan approved. And then they bring in individual sites and those are administratively approved. But I think it's a good idea to have touch points along the way. For instance, when they get the, the, uh, uh, master plan done, to bring it in and show it to you. Uh, when, obviously we've been very good about informing all of the council whenever we have new businesses coming to town or somebody's done a deal with somebody and they're going to do something. Sometimes it takes a long time like our, our hotel, but they're irrevocably committed and they're going to do it. So over a period of time, I think it's important where there's information that's germane, that'll really let you know what's going to go on the ground and what's going to be happening, that we bring that to you. The other thing we do is Bree does a great job with her business uh, reporting for uh, ribbon cuttings or people who have uh, consummated a deal on our coming to town and want to make an announcement. We, we shout that from the mountaintop. So I, I think it depends on how much you want and when you want it. But I believe in keeping you fully informed. This is a critical piece of property in our community.
So then referencing slide five, I don't know if you can go back to it, but the rendering, the concept that was drafted there um, is that where, where was this concept from? And as Jamie pointed out, you know, it's, it's calling out retail space, which isn't necessarily permitted there. Um, so can you explain a little bit about the concept? Because I was looking at this as good sales collateral or marketing collateral?
Right.
Is it, what is this? It's just?
This is a, a, a plan that we put together with Bob. Uh, we, we drafted it. We sent it to him. He marked it up. And he said, this, this is, this is a doable plan. And we know that you needed to know more and the public needed to know more. And so uh, Bob felt comfortable with showing this. It leaves a lot of flexibility for the users themselves. But it generally shows you that the, the, the uh, industrial uses that are not as attractive as the retailer in board and the attractive uses are on the perimeter.
And, but I'm talking about.
No, no, no. We're talking about the diagram. That one, that slide is merely to show what a master plan is.
That, that's what I mean. Like this is just a concept.
Yeah.
Right. That's the diagram. Yeah, no, but that, that's what I'm saying is that as I'm seeing master plan benefits, I see a great concept mockup.
Yeah.
That's not us. That's not for us.
If, if I could add a little something to it, when, when David and I went through the site plan, and I'm not sure what page ours is, uh, it is, it is conceptual and as David indicated, it shows general areas of uses. And at risk of really getting in hot water with Jamie, I, I would be surprised if at some point after master plan approval, we are not coming back for changes because again, we don't know who the users are. So when you see that drawing that showed four or five uh, commercial pads, that could change to three.
Yeah.
Or two, because one guy wants this and one guy wants that. Uh, what we envision is a scenario in the master plan where there are things that are our terms set in concrete, uh, in terms of what we're doing, where the roads are going to go, where the infrastructure is going to go. You know, the subdivision of the lots within those designated areas. How they get used is going to be driven by the market.
Yeah. And, and that was the point that I was going at. There's a great textbook rendering, thank you, on one page. And then there's the actual outline of the particular site. And so when I see these in a presentation, I'm being led to believe that that textbook image could be the realization of this particular property. But the fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is, the sketching, the conceptual art, whatever we're presented with now, that can change.
It can. And I think the best way to describe is if you look on slide nine, that is a concept drawing. And by the time that they develop the uses, they're going to have to have a drawing like slide five.
Right.
Because they've got to show the, the, the rooftop. They've got to show the parking. They've got to show the landscaping. And the person who wants it, wants it shown that way because that's what they're going to build.
Totally agree. And so the potential is on slide nine, that diagram could just be one building. Is that correct?
It's allowed by code, right?
Just, I'm just clarifying.
Right. And you know, if, if we had the right use that wanted to use it all, that met, you know, all the, all the requirements of that parcel and was supported, you know, at, at some point I can't just turn over the rules and say, well, we'll do whatever you want. But you know, our obje- our objective is to create quality stuff that goes on for a long time period. And there's nothing that says it wouldn't be a single user, but.
If, if it were, there are limits on the size of the building. So nobody's going to buy the whole thing and build a small building. So you're likely going to have a number of parcels, even if it's a single user, a number of buildings, a number of different landscaped or parking areas, areas for storm drainage, all of those kinds of things. So we do have a limitation on the size of buildings and that's part of EP two. So I think at the end of the day, you're going to have something that looks a lot more like slide five when they're done designing than just one big parcel. If you look at traffic uh, circulation, these roads are, are, are fashioned so that you have a good traffic circulation system. And you've got to get utilities to everybody through um, through rights of way or easements. So there are certain design criteria when you're doing your engineering that you have to lay out that ends up with the, with the limitation on building size with several buildings and not just one behemoth thing in the middle. We wouldn't allow it. It isn't allowed by code.
And, and I think one important thing is we've been talking about an EP zone, but it's also the overlay district. And one of the specific modifications to the, to the code, zoning code for that area is how transportation is handled to minimize impact to the residential area behind and also provide an appropriate gateway uh, to the snow quality. So those provisions in terms of transportation and impact to surrounding community has a special condition in the overlay district that we would have to address.
Thank you. And, and what I'm trying to get there is, you know, there's a range of possibilities. And I think it's been articulated fairly clearly that those possibility, those possibilities are constrained to what's in the code. There's exhaustive design standard that has to go through. All of that's the look and feel. That's been clearly articulated, but it needs to be set forth that in this particular property, it's probably going to be broken up with these different uses because that's what we're going to need to do just based on the overlay code and other uh, things that are required on this property.
I think that's reasonable, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then on slide six, James, thank you for walking us through.
Just a point of information, Your Honor, can I draw attention to the time and just get clarification? We do have another presentation and folks waiting.
I don't know what that has to do with my questions.
I'm just, just wondering if at what point we're going to move on to the next topic. I was just seeking guidance uh, from the mayor who I think is running the meeting.
Thank you. Well, I think we're gonna have one go, more go around, make sure everybody's been heard. So. One more.
May I continue? One more, well. I don't know if I agree with one more question, Your Honor, but.
Well, actually, um, fairness, Alan had about five. So. So you can, you've had a.
Well, I could have asked this mine at the beginning, but I thought we were going in order. So, um, so when I think about, there, there's two.
And you, you can email to.
Some of these questions are for the benefit of the public.
Okay.
Okay, let me grab my thoughts here. So I'll, I'll skip that one. When we get to, I guess it would be on slide eight again, or slide eight. Actually, where's the slide? Okay, slide eight. Yes, thank you. Thank you for putting together a summary of some of these key ones. I'm interested to know of the fifty, I think that you said, active leads. How many on there uh, that are being considered right now that are not on our brand, that are not within our brand? Because the ones that are highlighted here are, are clearly fit. But if we have fifty prospective businesses that we're considering, are they all on brand? Are they not on brand? And then how many of these fifty have had conversations? Have you had conversations with specifically to this site itself?
Well, I, I think James can handle the interaction with them. But if you take the brand statement out and you take the spokes of the wheel that are part of the brand, they deal with economic development, they deal with safe community. There are a number of things they deal with that I believe you could make a, a substantial argument. Some of them deal with tourism. You could make a substantial argument for each of these uses. Because the brand isn't just one use only.
So if I'm hearing you, if you forget the brand, forget the brand spokes, everything on the list could apply.
If you, I'm, I'm answering your question.
Well, no, my question is, how many of the fifty that are on this active list do not align with our brand that we're considering? I'm just curious.
Well, those that are on slide eight.
Those are select few.
Are, are, are all on, would, would all meet the brand. I could make an argument for all of them on the brand. With regard to the fifty, that's something that James would have to answer.
Yeah, thank you, Brendan. I, I would say of the fifty that are currently active projects, I would say less than five are probably not on brand. And those would be companies that were not, that I didn't actively go out and meet with. Those are ones that came in through different partners such as Grier Seattle Partners, Washington State Department of Commerce, things like that. They're just basically leads that come in, you know, that we basically track and, and see, you know, what comes of them. Uh, normally those types of projects, you know, would not land in North Bend. It just, it doesn't make sense based on what they're doing. land in North Bend. It just, it doesn't make sense based on what they're doing. Not only because it doesn't fit our brand, but because it just doesn't fit uh, their requirements, uh, for location to the community.
And then how many of these 50 have you had conversations with about this specific site?
Uh, about this specific site, I would say I've had conversations with, uh, all of these on the list here, uh, on slide eight and probably about 10 additional more as well. Uh, they've, they have asked me a lot of questions like when it will be developed, you know, that type of thing. So I've been giving them, you know, kind of an estimated timeframe. This is obviously before Bob and Robert came to us with this development. So you know, this, if this DA were to be approved and to go through, then, you know, I would be on the phone talking to all of them, letting them know that this, you know, project is moving forward and, you know, keep them interested in the site. Uh, generally companies have, uh, different timelines in terms of relocation. So some of these have longer timelines, you know, two to three years, others are like less than a year. It all kind of depends on their needs. But if the, kind of the trick is to ba- basically match their timeline with a development or a space that becomes available.
I know that several of the inquiries that come to us or, or people who are looking that either Greater Seattle or the Commerce Department sends, they want an existing building. When it comes down to that, either we have it or we don't. So more, more of the people who are looking at buying their own land or having someone build a suit which, uh, built, which, uh, CCOM does, then they'd come. But a lot of people need it right now. They need a building that's up and they need a certain power supply. Some of them need rail. I mean, when they have those kinds of things, we're just off the, off the list.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
In the interest of time, I will not ask any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Torgeson. One more question, that'd be great. No, you can email otherwise.
So the, um, the retail is not in EP2, yet we show retail on this plan. Um, can you explain?
So the, there's a general, there's pages and pages in our permitted use table. It does call out retail, that specific overarching use, it does not say it's permitted, but there's a ton of other associated uses that are still retail type, like a hardware store, like the nursery. Um, that, those are permitted. So it's, it's kind of a catchall and if, if that specific use um, was.
Like restaurants?
Um, I think restaurants are even allowed. Um, I'm trying to think of an example of something that is retail, but, but is not captured on there. Then it would fall under that approval of, um, it wouldn't require a rezone, you would, you would, um, you would have a similar use on the table that is allowed and you would, you would, they would have to show the benefit of having that use as part of the master plan. So it can still be approved. It's just if you want to change the zoning um, or the land use designation, you have to go through a different process.
In short, because we have the master plan, the overlay and we can control it, there's more flexibility where you have an overlay to put retail in. If you didn't have the overlay, it's a lot more strict in terms of industrial.
You're very welcome. Anybody else? Okay. Um, thank you very much, uh, Bob and Rob. Thank you for your time tonight and your, your efforts. And James, just thank you as well. And Mr. Miller, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item number three, our agenda tonight is a presentation.
Point of order, Your Honor. I thought there was public comment that was to be made after the presentation?
That's after the.
The entire meeting?
Yep.
So at the end of the, so it's not after each item?
It's after the entire, yeah, presentations, both of them.
Thank you.
We're, we're just moving on right now, so. Okay, um, once again, item three on our agenda tonight is a presentation. I'm moving on. I'm, I'm continuing. Yeah. Right now, we wanted to, no, we're not doing that right now. We'll do it at the end.
Okay.
Reason two. It's a little different, understandably, but we're going to get through it. So again, myself, I apologize. Item number three on our agenda tonight is a presentation on the Eastside Fire and Rescue Budget Chief Lane. There you are. Thank you for being here. And we will, would you please, um, perhaps provide us with your presentation?
Well, thank you and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff, uh, members of the community, both in person and online. I just want to be on the record that I'm up for the challenge. It's warm in here, it's late. And so I'm presenting on the most exciting topic in the fire service budget. So I'm here to keep you all awake and I'll try to get through this in a, a very timely manner.
Well, thank you.
Um. Real quick, before I jump into the presentation, I always like to take the opportunity to share just a little bit about uh, your fire chief. Uh, I was hired by the organization in 1994, which at that time was the first year that District 10 started providing service to the city of North Bend. In the old North Bend Fire Station, yellow fire trucks, so that's where I started my career. And somehow, some way, I'm here tonight as your fire chief presenting 30 years later on our budget. So again, thank you for this opportunity. Try to do two things at once here. There you go. Uh, I also recognize that I take for granted that I interact, uh, monthly with our board of directors. And in a lot of cases, uh, city council members and even community members aren't quite familiar with how Eastside Fire and Rescue is constructed. So we're a unique organization. Uh, we're a governmental nonprofit. I don't think there's another fire department, uh, certainly in the area, maybe even the region, that's a governmental nonprofit. And we are comprised of five main partners, which, uh, the city of North Bend is one of those. Fire District 10, District 38, uh, the cities of Sammamish and Issaquah are also, uh, main partners. We do provide, uh, fire and EMS services through contracts to this Snoqualmie Tribe. And that's particularly at the casino property. And then we have a contract for service with Woodinville Fire and Rescue, uh, the city of Mercer Island, and we're currently providing administrative services to uh, King County Fire District 45, which is Duval. Okay, well, who, who is Eastside Fire and Rescue? Uh, we certainly provide your fire EMS and your rescue services. But, um, different than a city fire agency, we provide all the internal services, all the working. So we provide, uh, again, fire, rescue EMS services, our E, uh, HR, payroll, finance, uh, public records requests, emergency management, more integrated health. Uh, we have fire marshal services for plan reviews, building inspections, public information officer, public education, data analysts, uh, facility and vehicle maintenance. So we are a one-stop shop as far as other services that we provide. We're a self-sufficient organization. Uh, this captures our service area. Uh, much different when I started, uh, 30 years ago, we've grown quite a bit. We are now at 14 career stations. Uh, nine of those are specifically inside the, uh, EFOR partners. The others are through contract for services. And you can see in the upper right-hand corner of the slide in the light blue, uh, those are stations 166 and 167. Those are Duval fire stations. Currently, I'm their interim fire chief as part of that, uh, interim administrative services. Effective January 1 of '25, they'll be part of Eastside Fire and Rescue. So the organization continued to grow. And we definitely see, uh, benefits as a contract agencies join the organization, which I will share a little bit later in the presentation. Here's a snapshot of the number of employees, uh, with Inside Eastside Fire. On the right-hand side, uh, those are the funded positions and on the left, um, are the actual positions we have. Um, you can see that just the contract, the two contract, contract agencies that we currently have, Mercer Island and Woodinville. Mercer Island fully funds 30 employees, Woodinville funds 62, and the EFOR partners fund 167. Again, as I shared in the who we are, we're a one-stop shop organization. We provide all the services. And in, in many cases, we too, as the city would, if you had to reduce services and reduce a position, there certainly would be an outsized impact of any sort of, uh, reduction, whether it be an emergency service personnel or essential non-emergency service personnel. I, I want to give you an example of, uh, what a contract agency does in a benefit to the EFOR partners. And, and captured here in this, uh, FTE count, the Fire Marshal's Office, it shows the number six. Well, currently, Eastside Fire and Rescue fully funds three of those positions. That's the same number of FTEs in the Fire Marshal's Office when the organization was formed in 1999. I believe that the data would indicate that there's nearly been 80% population growth across our service area. Uh, there's tremendous development, which is, uh, the primary topic of discussion here tonight. And, uh, EFOR has not, at this point, added FTEs into that Fire Marshal's Office, and that's only been because of the addition of contract agencies. For example, Mercer Island, they joined us January 1 of '24, they brought off a fire marshal. That fire marshal directly works with your city staff on plan reviews, building inspections. Uh, Woodinville Fire and Rescue, a three-station organization, they fully fund two FTEs in the Fire Marshal's Office. So that's just one example of a benefit of a contract agency being part of Eastside's regional, um, service model. Sure. Uh, sorry, full-time employee in the Fire Marshal's Office. And three of those are funded by EFOR, the other three are funded by the contract agencies. They are EFOR employees, however. Uh, again, as I, I shared at the beginning, a little bit about who we are, we're a governmental nonprofit and we, uh, here's our governing bylaws. Uh, we have a interlocal agreement between the five primary partners. Our agency is funded in three buckets, which I'll, I'll talk a little bit about later. And then our standards of cover, this is the adoption of the board's decision around how we provide services to not only the community of North Bend, but the surrounding communities and the other communities within Eastside Fire and Rescue. We're governed by a board of directors. Um, each partner, city or district has a representative. So in North Bend's case, there is one board of director. The city of, cities of Issaquah and Sammamish both have two, Fire District 10 has two, and Fire District 38 has one. Uh, that's the eight board members. All right, so the real reason why we're here. Uh, one, I just want to point out this slide. This is actually our tiller ladder truck at the takeoff point, Apu, Apu Poo Point on Tiger Mountain. Uh, how that got there, I still am not sure, but we did get it down. So, uh, it, it's quite the photo. Okay, uh, so our budget is really comprised of three main areas. Uh, largely our operating fund, and then we have our equipment replacement fund and our capital facilities maintenance fund. And I'll dive into those a little bit more later on in this presentation. Part of how we're constructed and in those, uh, governing bylaws in the document, we have a funding formula. And so the five partners pay a proportional share by utilizing that funding formula. They pay the, the, the partner's share of the operating budget. We use, uh, the easiest way to explain it is that it's roughly 85% AV and 15% call volume. We update it the year prior to a budget season. So now that we're prepping the 25, 26 budget, we're using 2023 call volume and 2023 AV. We're using the call volume in '23 because we haven't completed, uh, '24. So you can see that there is a slight increase in the percentage that North Bend will be responsible for in our operating budget going into '25, '26. That is in part due to, uh, just the shift amongst the other partners. But again, 85% of that is AV related and 15% of that is call volume related. Assess valuation.
Uh, council, just to, for your edification, let's hold off for questions, concerns, I think, going forward. Thank you.
So an overview of our adopted, uh, 23, 24 budget and the transition into our proposed 25, 26 budget. So the adopted budget in '24, uh, was just over $50 million. We did a mid-buy budget adjustment, so there was an amendment at the end of last year going into '24. It's important to note that a large percentage of that mid-buy adjustment was directly associated with the Mercer Island contract for service. So you can see the jump between the adopted 24 budget, uh, to our proposed 25 budget is nearly a 19.02% increase. Uh, 15 and a half percent of that is directly related to the Mercer Island contract for service. Again, they fully fund their service model. And so in the mid-buy, the board of directors had the decision on how to bridge the gap and the shortcoming in the mid-buy, which was roughly a three and a half percent, uh, shortfall, which is that $1.7 million there. Uh, to show you, uh, how the five partner agencies funded that shortfall. I believe in last week's presentation by Finance Director Chaw, he talked about levers that US Council could pull around short, mid, and long-term, um, related options. One thing to note that Eastside Fire, we are again, the governmental nonprofit, we have no taxing authority. So there's no ability for us to find other ways to generate revenue. So we directly rely on our five partners to fund that. Uh, in this particular case, that $1.7 million shortfall between '23 and '24, the board took action unanimously, supported using um, late collected revenue to bridge that gap. However, um, again, that would have been a short-term lever. However, if the decision was to build, um, our reserves and the proportional amount was funded by the, the partners, cities or districts, this would indicate North Bend would have paid, uh, nearly $90,000 to, to help bridge that gap. I want to just walk through, um, the percentage increase, and this is specifically to the operating budget. So North Bend is conveniently located at the top of the graph there. Our proposed, uh, 2025 budget has our operational expenses for North Bend at 1.7. Uh, the amended, uh, is 1.5. And again, as you recall, uh, that amended amount of nearly $90,000 was funded by revenue collected. And there was no direct cost for the city of North Bend to bridge that gap. However, if we, if North Bend did bridge that gap, the comparison to the proposed 25 budget to the amended is the 12.31%. Um, and for tonight's discussion, I recognize that everything's really going to be based off of the adopted numbers of '24, which is the 1.4 million, uh, in the comparison to the proposed 1.7. That is a proposed 19.3%, 30% increase in the operating budget. Uh, here just shows the bigger picture and the development of our budget. Again, we have a two-year budget. Uh, this is our second year in a zero-based budgeting process. Uh, one of the values of blending organizations, we have a finance director who came in from, uh, Woodinville Fire to help guide us through that. Uh, what is done is force staff to be very diligent around what they're proposing. And there's justifications for every dollar, uh, lined out in our line item budget. As you can see in the preliminary, uh, budget development for, for '25 and '26, we did not present that. I challenged staff. Um, at that point, they went back and we cut nearly, uh, $2 million out of that. We presented draft one at our first FAC meeting. And there was no direction specifically from the FAC. Uh, again, I'm sorry if I, I've skipped over who comprises the FAC. It's our finance and administrative committee. And there's a representative, uh, an EFOR board representative from each partner's city or district. And then we invite their finance staff or city staff to attend. So in our first presentation of the FAC, that was draft one, was that 66 million in, uh, '25 and the 70 million in '22. Uh, they didn't need to say anything. We took back the constructive, uh, questioning and we dug deeper. And so to date, we have cut, uh, across those two budgets or the two years, uh, nearly five and a half million dollars. Okay. A bit more specific to North Bend. The adopted budget, so the operation fund there at the top is the 1.4. Again, we're proposing 1.7. You can see the difference between the adopted 24 payment to the proposed 25 payment is a $281,000 increase going into 2025. The other two buckets, the equipment replacement and capital facilities. I'll talk a little bit more about the historical, uh, levers that were pulled later in the presentation. But the adopted North Bend's proportional contribution to that fund in 2024 is the 57,000. We're proposing 75,000 in '25, and that's a $17,000 increase. Capital facilities maintenance fund. North Bend's proportional share of that was 3,842. There's an asterisk next to that because again, another lever, uh, that the board elected to, to. There's an asterisk next to that because again, another lever, uh, that the board elected to, to pull was they used end fund balance to make that payment on behalf of all the partners. It's also important to note that those decisions from the board, that eight-member board, those were unanimous decisions. And I'll walk through, uh, some of the other historical decisions that were made. You know, we have faced challenging times, uh, certainly since twenty-nineteen and on. And so we've helped try to answer the ongoing financial pressure of our partner cities specifically. And so the board took the necessary action to do that. So here's the, the difference between the proposed twenty-five and the proposed twenty-six. You can see, again, we talked about the one point seven, we're proposing one point eight in twenty-six. That's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar increase between those two years. The Equipment Replacement Fund proposing the hundred and fourteen thousand, one forty-four in twenty-six. Uh, and that is a thirty-eight, roughly a thirty-nine thousand dollar increase from, um, twenty-five. Capital Facilities Maintenance Fund, we're keeping that funded at the same, that ten thousand four seventy-four. However, uh, at least in this discussion, this payment would be directly coming from the city of North Bend and not made, uh, using end fund balance. However, that certainly could be a lever that the board could pull should we have excess end fund balance. We're just not there to project that yet. So you can see the, the total increase with those three buckets combined between twenty-five and twenty-six. We're proposing eight point five eight percent increase. A similar slide was presented to you last week in your first budget hearing, comparing the increase from the adopted twenty-twenty-four to the proposed twenty-twenty-five. I believe in that slide, it showed the total increase, uh, nearly, uh, at right at thirty-five percent. Uh, we've been at this a while. Again, you've, you've seen how much we've scrubbed, so those, those numbers that presented could have been old numbers. These are where we stand today with, uh, option two, a version two of our budget. So you can see comparing those two years, uh, to the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six. It's a, a twenty-six point three-zero percent, uh, proposed increase. Okay, I did not take a bite out of that pie, so I have no idea how that chunk missed there. But this is just another good example, gives you a visual of, you know, what comprises Eastside Fire and Rescue's operational budget. Uh, eighty percent, eighty-eight percent is, uh, wages and benefits. So there is very little room around any sort of reduction. Um, we're a very trim agency. We talked about the FTE positions and the outsized impacts, should we have to make any cuts? And then you can see the other two areas, supplies and services. Here's a bit more of a granular view of, um, some of our larger, uh, buckets that make up of our line item budget. Again, on the, on the right there, you can see that, uh, seventy-two and nearly seventy-two and a half percent of that budget is directly related to suppression. Suppression, um, is synonymous with our, our fire EMS service delivery. So, oh, the overwhelming majority of our budget is dedicated to, uh, the emergency services we provide. Okay, so, uh, talked a fair amount about our operating budget. Now I just want to dive into the other two buckets. So Equipment Replacement Fund. The partners, the five partners, they pay into this fund on an annual basis. This funds not only our actual equipment, and meaning the small tools and equipment that the crews use, uh, to affect or rescue or suppress a fire, but also to replace the fire apparatus. And here is an example of some of those short-term levers that have been pulled that unfortunately, we are coming to this crossroads where, um, it's now time for us to try to address, address that. Again, those were unanimous decisions at the time. So using, uh, twenty-twenty as an example, uh, the, we use end fund balance to make the, the partner contributions. In twenty-twenty-one, there were no partner contributions and there was no transfer from end fund balance. The decision was to spend down this particular, uh, fund. Uh, and so just back in twenty-twenty-three, we reinstated, uh, the contributions. However, we reinstated it without updating some of the more important costs, specifically the cost of a fire apparatus. It is nearly, it's gone up a hundred percent in the last ten years. Uh, today, to buy a new fire engine is one point four million dollars. Uh, so this fund and the ability to keep up with that, uh, it's those, those inflationary costs have certainly outpaced that. Okay, so our, the other bucket of money, the other fund, uh, a little bit smaller, but it's our Capital Facilities Maintenance Fund. So you as a partner, uh, one thing to note is that you own the apparatus. So there are engines, aid cars, and units that are titled to you as an owner. And you certainly own your facility. However, in your case, you're a joint owner with, uh, D-38 and the city of North Bend for, uh, the beautiful station eighty-seven. This walks through the historical contributions to this fund. Uh, you can see in, uh, twenty-nineteen was the last time there was any direct contribution from partners. And again, over those last, uh, those years that are identified there from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-four, either there was no contribution made and the decision was to spend down the fund, or the contribution was made, um, on behalf of the city or district using end fund balance. And so what we're proposing is reinstating a direct contribution from our partner cities and districts into the Capital Facilities Maintenance Fund moving forward. Okay, this shows, uh, the percentage of the operating budget that the five partners pay in comparison to our contract fire district and our contract city. A good comparison is Samamish and Woodinville Fire and Rescue. The city of Samamish has three stations within side their city limits. Uh, their call volume is, uh, roughly twenty-four hundred calls a year. Uh, square miles are pretty similar to Woodinville of twenty versus twenty-eight. The population is quite a bit higher and their AV is higher. However, you can see that Woodinville Fire and Rescue funds nearly one quarter of the operational budget. Why is that? Well, you as a partner agency, you directly benefit from cost sharing across the five partners, where contract agencies, they fully fund their service level and they pay a ten percent administrative fee. That ten percent administrative fee, which is based off of their operational contribution, goes directly into the revenue side of Eastside Fire and Rescue's budget, which in turn reduces you as one of the five partners, your contribution, uh, to the operational budget. The, the proportional share of the pie left over, that's not either funded by Woodinville, Mercer Island, or some of our other revenue sources, uh, is funded by the city. Some of our other revenue sources, so if you were to add this up, you would note that that's not a hundred percent of our operational budget. We receive funds from King County EMS. We have a fee for transport structure. Um, one area where we generate funds on behalf of the city, for the city, is our plan review. We've talked, uh, a, a lot about development. So our Fire Marshal's Office does plan reviews and building inspections. And so there's a permitting fee associated with that. That revenue, uh, is directly, uh, contributed back into the city of North Bend's, um, funding source. Getting closer. And then this just shows kind of those numbers together, side by side. So, uh, partner contributions is nearly fifty-one percent, um, of the operating budget in comparison to non-partners. So that would be the contract agencies and then those other few revenue sources. Uh, so how does Eastside Fire and Rescue's budget compare? Again, after listening to Finance Director Chaw's presentation last week, I think there was a question by a council member, and I apologize, I don't remember the name, but it was, how would, would the city of North Bend best compare their cost for services to neighboring agencies? And I believe he said it from a, on a per capita comparison. So taking the opportunity to just demonstrate to you a per capita comparison. Uh, one thing to note, it's, this is, uh, because we don't have our neighboring agency's twenty-twenty-five budget. This is comparing our proposed twenty-five budget to our neighboring fire agencies adopted twenty-four budget. You can see the EFER's adopted twenty-four budget is there. And then our proposed twenty-five budget is second in line, and then you can see the progression. And this covers from fire districts to regional fire authorities to, uh, specifically city fire departments. Again, as I stated, this maybe is not an apples-to-apples comparison from Eastside Fire, who provides all the services to a city fire department. Where a city fire department, they may get their HR services from city staff. City staff might do their payroll. Uh, so those are some of the examples that we do that all in-house. So this is one comparison. Uh, and then I have one more slide, just to break it down a bit more granular to show the five partners. And so this is the city of North Bend's proportional contribution to our proposed budget in twenty-five in comparison to our neighboring agency's adopted twenty-twenty-four budget. You can see our five partners are highlighted in there. Those, again, those numbers are associated with our proposed twenty-twenty-five budget. All the other agencies that are not associated with Eastside Fire, that's their adopted twenty-twenty-four budget. So that just gives you a comparison to look at, you know, uh, i- is Eastside Fire and Rescue a cost-effective model? I certainly believe that's the case. And as you, you saw prior in the presentation, what we proposed initially, and we've come back, um, and we've worked to reduce that, we still have ongoing discussions. In fact, tomorrow, we have another Finance and Administrative Committee meeting, where we'll be specifically talking about our equipment replacement or capital facilities. And then we have another two-hour meeting scheduled on the twenty-fifth. So we take direct, uh, you know, input from our directors, representatives from there. And we're going to work hard to, you know, try to balance the financial pressures that you as a city are under with the ongoing short-term levers that have historically been pulled, that are now catching up to the organization and our ability to still, uh, deliver the high level of services that our community members have certainly come to expect. And there's some of our finest, and with that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Lane, for that excellent presentation. Uh, Council, any questions? Um, Mr. Elwood?
I want to go back to the assessed valuation. Christine asked it, and I was wondering the same thing. And we weren't allowed to ask, so I Googled it, but what do you, what is that exactly?
It's, it's, uh-
Property value.
Yeah, the property value, um, we look at as, uh, that's the insurance policy. So that's the overwhelming proportional share of that, uh, calculation where the city of Samamish, for example, has a very high AV and they have a larger percentage dollar amount associated with their contribution to the piece of the pie. They have the highest AV and they have the largest population, yet their call volume is lower than the city of Issaquah. However, the city of Samamish pays more because we're protecting more value in that city.
And who do you get your insurance from?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I was giving you, I was using the example that we are an insurance policy for you as the cities and the fire districts. Uh, we're funded to provide a protection service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, just want to clarify a point, um, that was raised, that you raised on the last two charts where we're doing the cost-per-capita analysis. Even though it's not perfectly apples-to-apples, we're looking at your proposed budget relative to adopted budget. So, one, the assumption is those budgets from those other communities are likely to go up, right?
That would be my assumption as well, yes.
And then, two, um, you mentioned a cost savings that I just wanted to reiterate. And, and if I understood it correctly, is that even though these other communities that are on this chart or on these charts, um, are higher, they cost more, they have more resources available to them in-house by sharing other department resources like staff and, and HR that you're doing in-house. So even though they're more expensive, they also have greater resources available to them to actually reduce the costs than what they're realizing compared to what we have with Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Yes, that would be specific to any of those agencies listed that are city fire departments. Um, the regional fire authorities, they'd be very similar to providing, um, all the services.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Tremolata?
A little bit of the new kid on the block, so I don't know the history between Eastside. Um, can you explain to me why EFER became or started with a 501(c)(3), because by the valuation of AV, right, if you were a regional taxing authority, there's, this number is right around ninety-six billion, I think, right? And if we're regionally using that AV for property tax or some other levy, I feel like the budget would look way different, right?
So, uh, one, we, we, we're a governmental nonprofit. We didn't file to be a 501(c)(3). The, the driving reason behind moving to the governmental nonprofit status was, again, I shared, I joined the organization in nineteen ninety-four with Fire District 10. Um, at the time, the fire chief was kind of a visionary around providing regional services. So District 10 teamed up with the city of North Bend to provide service. We also, at the time, were providing services to Snoqualmie. Um, but in nineteen ninety-nine, the formation of those five partners, it was just simply about cost sharing and the ability to share costs to overhead, is an example, uh, cost across jurisdictional boundaries. And the reason to go to the governmental nonprofit, uh, when we incorporated in twenty-twenty-one is that up until that point, from nineteen ninety-nine till the incorporation, that Fire District 10 was the employer of record. And so they carried a disproportional amount of the liability, uh, personnel liability. Again, the discussion around a regional fire authority took place, uh, in the creation of this. And those at the table at the time really felt like this was the best way to really maintain local control, because right as I shared with you, we don't have taxing authority. So we have to get, work hard to get three cities and two fire districts aligned to what we're proposing versus a, a different model. There's only one board that you might have to, uh, report to, or, or one specific partner. So the, the, the real main reason back then was just to share the proportional, um, liability and for Eastside Fire and Rescue to actually own property, because prior to that, they couldn't own anything. So we're now in a position, should we want to move to replace our headquarters facilities and the five partners agree on a funding structure, Eastside could be the title of owner, uh, to a facility.
Thank you, anybody, uh, Mr. Torquason?
Hi, um, so I'm looking at the EFER Board of Directors Administrator Policy and, um, under number eight, Funding Formula Ratio Recalculations. Um, it says, "A partner's actual dollar contribution year-over-year increase shall be capped at one point five percent over the actual EFER partner contribution annually budgetary increase across all funds." Um, I was trying to understand that. Um, I know last year, I think we were at a one point six increase over the previous budget. And then, and this one is like over twenty percent increase from the previous year, which is really hard for a small city to be able to recoup that in one year. Um, I'm, are we still following the policies? I'm a little confused about how it should, like, it's supposed to be capped, and it feels like it's not being capped, so I'm confused about that.
Yeah, I believe that that's referencing the percentage in relation to the funding formula, not the percentage of the increase in the budget. So as I shared with you, twenty-three to twenty-four in comparison to twenty-five, twenty-six, there's about a quarter percent increase for the city of North Bend. Uh, I, I believe, and this was a bit before my time when I was still on the trucks, there was a, a point where there was a much larger increase and whether it was a shift in AV or there was a delay in updating that formula. And so they created a smoothing formula philosophy around trying to even it out across the partners. So that is not, uh, speaking to the percent increase of the operational budget. Because if we were only to increase our operational budget at one and a half percent year-over-year across all five partners, we certainly would not be able to provide service at all.
Thank you, anybody else, council questions? Mr. Jocelyn?
Good evening, thank you for your time and, um, presentation. Just, right, to be on the record that, that, you know, looking at this adopted twenty-four and the proposed twenty-five, that twenty percent increase is significant and jumps out and, uh, presents this council with real challenges going forward. I didn't hear a lot of wiggle room. If I understand correctly, that's after two rescissions. I don't know what you anticipate going forward. And then the following year, an eight or almost nine percent pay increase. I'm simply want to encourage you to, to continue to try and pare this back. If you wanted to provide a high-level summary of- to try and pare this back. If you wanted to provide a high-level summary of what explains that significant increase at this point of time, I know you just presented on this, but staffing costs, the rescission of previously available federal funds, whatever it is that at this moment in time, we're seeing similar increases, of course, for police services contract. And just a high level, how do we justify this to the folks that are here and say, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, because that's sure how it feels to me. But I just want to start, and I'm sure it's not news, this is a tall ask.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And we, as staff, one, staff that are listening certainly think all their efforts to get us to this point, we will be reaching out to respective finance directors from the cities and inviting them and their EFER board or FAC member to sit down directly with our finance director to walk through some of the more granular, because it does take a fair amount of explanation around the detail. And my job as the fire chief is to put you as decision makers in a position where you can make an informed decision. So point well taken. Thank you.
Anybody else from council?
Two questions. We are partnered with FD 38 at the North Bend Station 87. Who's FD 38?
Fire District 38. So the city of North Bend, the best way to explain that is really the unincorporated areas outside of the city proper. So the fire district, Eastside Fire provides that services. They're governed by a three-member board of commissioners. And North Bend and Fire District 38 entered into a joint agreement to build the much-needed Station 87 in comparison to where we were currently operating or previously operating out of, which I have fond memories of.
And then my second question was, you did north, you did square miles for each city and what you drive, or whatever, your emergency services. And North Bend was pretty small, 4.2. So are we getting charged for other cities' gas? Do we share that? Or do we get a smaller gas price?
No, as far as funding the fueling of the apparatus, that gets lumped into our services. The city of North Bend, although four and a half square miles, we are in a region, King County, we have an automatic mutual aid agreement. And so when there's a motor vehicle collision on I-90 at mile post 42, which is inside of our default service area, we're the closest unit, we respond and provide the necessary life-saving services. So although outside of the city of North Bend, that's a direct responsibility of Eastside Fire and Rescue.
One more look around if I've missed anybody? Nope. Okay, good. Thank you, Chief Agan, for your time and all your effort tonight.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
I'm going to ask the council if you have a motion in order I might hear about.
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to move that the resolution authorizing a development agreement between North Bend, the city of North Bend, and Middle Fork Property Development LLC from the October 1st, 2024, to City Council Meeting to September 17th, 2024, City Council Meeting for Final Action.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mark Jocelyn and seconded by Errol Tremolata. If any members of the audience would like to comment on either of the agenda items we have, we'd invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with the city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand on the virtual platform, and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address. Sorry about that. And for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Also, if you prefer, especially if you've been already to provide a comment at the September 3rd meeting on the development agreement, let's see, it is perfectly acceptable to just state your name, your address for the record, and whether you approve or disapprove of the item. I will remind all of us, all of us here, that it is expected that all speakers will deliver their comments in a courteous and efficient manner, and that no disorderly conduct such as clapping or after public comment is allowed. Those in violation may be asked to leave the meeting. So let's hope that doesn't happen. All right. Anybody? Come on up. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Jerry Taylor Suede. I live at 14220 436 Avenue Southeast in North Bend. I just want to talk about the city council meeting that happened last time, and then the discussion about the same thing today. And listening to the bleak forecast for the financial status of our city, it appears that we have to have a way as a city to be able to function. And I feel like taxes are something that we can't really deal with as far as citizens of North Bend. We're all taxed out, we're all maxed out, basically, because everything has gone up. So it seems to me that having a way to be able to make more money for the city through sales tax of having this development out out there by the auto, I mean, by the, by the truck town, it seems to me like it's a really good deal, and it should be done. I and my husband moved to North Bend because we like the feeling of a small town. We like the, I believe you said, you called it the brand, Brendan, you called it the brand of North Bend. We like the brand of North Bend. We want the brand of North Bend to continue. But at the same time, there has to be a way for the city, and this, this seems like the way. It's, it seems, it's, it's been zoned for 30-something years already. So why are we still discussing whether it should be sold or not? It doesn't make sense to me. And the, the thing is, is that because of what David Miller said, I didn't know these things until I came tonight, but you all as a city council have so much input still that you can make. Once this property is sold, and once it's starting the process of being developed, you're going to be able to have stopgaps along the way to where you can say, we want more beautification, or we want more design, or we want more this or that. You've still got the room to say, to do that. And it seems to me, as a citizen of this town that I love, we need to have more jobs, we need to have more recognition of our town so that more people will want to come here. And like, I, I believe it was David Miller or James said, I forget which one, said that there's so many millions of dollars that could be spent here, but it's leaving our town and going other places. So I would really encourage you to go forward with this thing and get some more taxes in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Anybody else care to, if you can come, come on up? Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you very much. Gabriel Wood. I live at 4369 Southeast 147th Place. And in terms of the proposed development, I do have some concerns. And it's not necessarily that it goes forward, it's private land. I understand that people can do what they want to do with private land, that's the whole issue. The issue is my tax dollars and where our tax dollars are going to support that. And I do find it interesting, the juxtaposition of needing to fund an essential service like fire services with a proposed development, which is incentivizing them through our tax dollars while needing to also fund our essential services. And the problem that I have is that I think there's, one, there's not been a significant effort on the council's part to get this out. There was not even any mention of this special meeting, really, on the council website, you had to dig for it. So that's problematic for me. And two is, you know, if they want to develop it, they can develop it. It's, that's capitalism, right? They can do what they want to do. But my problem is, why are we funding it without guaranteeing more controls? Talking about Brandon, talking about small-town North Bend, I want to see North Bend continue for my child, who is 10 months old now, in the manner that it, that it is now, and that it's a small town that cares about its people. And so to Councilmember Elwood's point in regard to what's being built there, as far as I know, Puget Western has been behind very large developments, I think a 1.1 million square foot or proposed 1.1 million square foot Tumwater facility, is that correct? I don't think it went through. That being said, 1.1 million square feet to the small building on the property, that's, that's nearly 25 acres. So you could do two buildings, and how long, how much of an incentive is that for us as citizens? Sure, it might bring in an immediate cash flow, but I feel like this is a very short-sighted thing unless we actually do institute more controls. And the brand of North Bend is, is that small town and is a small-town feel. So I don't feel that this has the necessary controls, input, if my tax dollars go into it, and, and all of our tax dollars for that matter. Develop it if you want, we can't do anything about it, but I don't want to see my money going toward that or any sort of tax breaks, but encourage it without the input of citizens and our elected officials. That's, that's basically what it comes down to for me. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who have a comment? Come on up. Is that Jean?
Thank you, folks. I'll be brief. I know everybody's tired. Jean Buckner, 46226 Southeast 139th Place, North Bend. Want to say a couple of things. One is a question for the council, and that is, does it kind of feel like we're putting the cart before the horse on this one? If you approve this DA without seeing the master plan first, you've given away all your right, your ability to comment on the development. Now, yes, the staff will bring it before you for you to review and comment, but you will have given away your right to make decisions about the property. Therefore, my suggestion is, let's put the horse before the cart. Most developments, you've got a master plan first, so that you guys will know what you're doing, what you're approving specifically. I also know of another developer that's interested in this specific site. I also want to report that this afternoon, I met with a large group of folks from the, the environmental community, government, finance, King County, Portera, Mountains de Sound, Si View Parks, the local businessman whom you all know. And we came up with an idea, a consensus around what a development on this property could look like. And it's an integrated concept, 35 acres with large business, small business, and open space and green space that we will be sharing with you as we move into the future. So I was pleased that the group came up with a consensus on this concept, and I'll be getting more specifics to you after it's developed and sent back to the group. The other thing is this, this tax situation, 50% reduction in traffic and stormwater impact fees. That I understand, and I could be wrong about this, is on top of an existing 50-some-odd percent that's already given away as a part of EP2. So please check that, because that's a huge amount of money. And I don't see why we're giving away that type of incentive. I do believe and have heard about developers that are interested in that particular parcel. And I understand there've been conversations, and that if this DA doesn't move forward for whatever reason, folks are going to be bringing up their proposals. So no need to move forward with a agreement, with a development agreement before you've seen a master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Anybody else wish to have a moment? Okay. Please come forward.
Hello, my name's Anne Smith. I live at 46333 140th Street. I live right next to this piece of property, so the side and the back. Been here for 30 years. I also have severe concerns around an approval for a plan that does not have a master plan and more details around what I will be living next to and the other residence. I just think there's more due diligence that needs to be completed and more specific shared before this is voted. I also have concerns as far as what's going to protect those four residences, and the ones also across the street that are going to be built. So I disapprove.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Good evening.
Hi, Jody Lockso, 450 Northeast Fourth Street. I was here last week, too, and I still kind of have the same question, which is, what is the rush? Why do we not have more information about a decision we're making about this? And what, last week, I thought I saw all of you agree that the meeting for the vote would be on October 1st. So why is it, why did it get moved? Because all the people that were here are sort of expecting that, and seems like that was kind of unfair. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Anybody else in the room? Michael?
Mike Thomas, can you hear me?
Thanks for your patience. Yep, you can.
Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive SE. First of all, I want to thank the council for its leave to ensure the promised public comment was, was allowed during this meeting, and hopefully at the subsequent meeting. This was, this was in debate, and my communications with city administrator indicated otherwise. So I do want to thank the council for ensuring the fairness. I wanted to get really to two points, and these, the questions were sent to council. And also, I enjoy a unique, a different status. Myself and Ms. Buckner also commented at the planning commission hearing with many concerns on the lack of detail. And, you know, I'm very much in agree that there really is insufficient detail to commit this development agreement. And I'm going to sharpen my pencil a little bit. As I read, and these are questions that, that I, one of the questions that I framed as part of the meeting, but I'm going to get to the more important one, is when I look at NVMC 1827 070 parts A through F and H and I, the development agreement does not appear to meet the conditions for an approval of a development agreement according to NVMS, this, this code. And I think it would be important for staff and a city attorney to address this and council to, to weigh this as to whether or not the development agreement itself contains the necessary conditions for approval. I, I don't see them in the current DA as framed. Of course, these might be the subject of a master plan, but, but they may not. And to, you know, speak to putting, you know, the cart before the horse, the DA is the time to ensure that those items in NVMC 1827 070 parts A through F, H, and I are addressed. So I don't view that, that this DA frames it correctly. You don't have the necessary condition. So I'm in the camp of no approval. Not to say that you can't bring it back, that maybe it can't be amended, but, but I don't see its adequacy. The other question that, that I saw was, and it was framed at the, at the prior council meeting, was NVMC 1738040 Part 10. The developer, it's Employment Park, and as I read this code, Employment Park is entitled to a 57% reduction in traffic fees, and other developments are entitled to even higher. In addition, the code suggests that, that being in an overlay also entitles, you know, this to a reduction. So is this, is the developer also going to get this, this large reduction of 57% and then a 50% abatement or, you know, deferral of the fees? That I think is key important, is we have citizens articulating about the cost of this. And again, in summary, I ask that these questions be addressed, and I close
Please conclude.
Yep, I'm concluding right now. And I ask, I ask the council to really not approve the DA as written. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else online tonight? Aaron?
Nobody else online.
Thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Jocelyn?
The motion before us is moving action on this item from October 1st to September 17th. I'm the one who brought us here by requesting that the previous vote be postponed. We've had this evening together and shared information and insight. I want to share all the participants who've come forward and shared their concerns and expressed their interest. At this point, I think it's in the best interest of the city to move expeditiously on this matter, and I will be voting in favor of moving action to September 17th. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn, and Mr. Tremolata, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, just on this matter, I voted no last meeting. Yeah, just on this matter, I voted no last meeting to, to move it. I, I don't think that should have happened. I understand some of the concerns as to why from my fellow council folks. With that said, I think we've done due diligence. This did come through planning commission. This did come through CED. We've talked and interviewed and discussed with the developer group multiple times. We had this event here and I think just procedurally, if we're going to delay a vote, it should go to the next scheduled council meeting. I'm not entirely sure why we skipped the 17th or the 1st. That doesn't make any sense to me. It's our job of this body to do the city's business in an earnest fashion. And I think this should have been voted on in the last meeting and I, I will vote in support of moving this up to vote on it on the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. Tremolata. Anybody else from council wish to make a comment?
Point of order, Your Honor. And this is a question for our parliamentarian. Is it possible for a member of this body to vote against a motion and then bring that motion back at a subsequent meeting? My understanding is that this special council meeting was probably set up for this particular motion is my hunch. I don't know if that's accurate or not. But I also believe that you have to be in an affirmative support of a motion and then switch your vote to bring it back to the table.
So if this motion, I think I understand your question, Councilmember Elwood. If this motion fails due to a lack of majority, though, a, a different motion may come forward. If you wish to bring another motion forward on the same topic, is that your next question?
No, my, my, my concern is, is that we had a procedure, we followed it at the last meeting. We set up an October 1st deadline. And now the motion is back before us from folks that did not support the original motion, yet we're voting on it again. And I think that's in breach of parliamentary procedure. So I'd just like confirmation if I'm right or wrong.
So you're talking about a motion to reconsider. So a motion to reconsider does require changing a vote at the same meeting. What I'm hearing here though is a change of circumstances, so a change of date. I don't hear that as a motion to reconsider.
I'm not clear on the circumstances.
And I'm not speaking to the underlying circumstances with all due respect. I am speaking to the change of date. So we're not making a motion to, for example, reconsider a vote on a substantive matter. We're picking a different date. Here is what I hear Councilmember Jocelyn's motion to be. I don't hear this as a motion to reconsider a prior vote.
Okay, so part of the motion was the date. But now we're saying that that motion can be revisited.
But that is my opinion, Councilmember Elwood, is this is a different motion. I understand it's framed very similar, but it is a different motion coming before you because it has a different date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from council wish to comment? Okay, the motion before us is to move the resolution authorizing a development agreement between North Bend and Middle Fork Property Development LLC from October 1st to 2024 City Council meeting to September 17th, 2024 City Council meeting for final action. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so that's five, four and two against. A motion does pass. All right, at this time I'm going to make a motion, ask for a motion to adjourn. Anybody up for that?
So move.
Okay, thank you. Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Motion. Seconded by your Tremolata. Everybody have a great evening. Thanks for all the presentations tonight and for all the community involvement. Thank you for being here. Have a great night.